I would like to welcome everyone to the September 9th, 2013 City Council Meeting. It does my heart good, we must be having a heck of a rezoning tonight. It does my heart good to see so many good people in the audience. At this time, I'm gonna, we're gonna change a little bit, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna have Forrest Fleming, our City Councilman, who's a retired Command Sergeant Major, to lead us with the invocation. He is the Western Area Chairman of the Employee Support for the Guard and the Reserve, does a big job for us, and at this time, please stand, and I don't think anybody's got a hat on, and we'll have a flag on the monitor about, wait just a minute Forrest, hopefully, Chad? There we go.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
Thank you Forrest, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Sheldon?
Yes, sir.
It's your time for an invocation.
Is this my last time to say this?
Could be, may not be.
It may not be. Well geez, I've got all this, four pages to read. So I just wanna say, in this moment, maybe in retirement, that I'm an expert in what it is to know where the most beautiful place in the world is to live. I come from the most beautiful place in New York State, the Finger Lakes, the Glacier Lakes, Deep Lakes, and beautiful places, most educational place with Cornell University and Thicke College, I came from there. So that, this is the background, when my wife and I, when I came to retire, and we wanted to find a continuing care place, and we looked all around Arizona, we looked all around Florida, we looked all around great parts of North Carolina, and we thought that Morganton was the best place. So, I stand before you with great appreciation for Morganton, for the way the city lives, the community, sense of community, and I've, after a long number of years here, I really appreciate having had the chance to be here, be part of it. And I just say to you quickly, that I've tried to be integrated in the city of Morganton. I worked emergency room for eighteen years, I worked with the police for seventeen years, I called in hospice patients for twelve, I ushered the comma for a number of years, odd and on, so on, and come to believe that we have a great place here, and we ought never to sell it short, we ought to live positively for the meaning of Morganton and the life of this world. You want me to say, well say the Lord's Prayer, if we do have to do that, instead of using death as Baptist might, or trespasses as somebody else might, let's use the word sins, and that includes everybody, okay? May we pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever.
Sheldon, stay there Steve, stay there. I wanna read a resolution congratulating and commending Reverend Sheldon Stevenson for his service as Chaplain for the City of Morganton. Whereas Reverend Sheldon Steve Stevenson has devoted countless hours to the City of Morganton in various capacities, and whereas Reverend Sheldon Steve Stevenson served at the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium as a Blue Blazer for twenty years, and whereas Reverend Stevenson served as Chaplain for the Morganton Department of Public Safety for seventeen years, and whereas Sheldon Stevenson has served as Chaplain for the City of Morganton City Council since January 1995, and whereas Reverend Steve Stevenson has consistently provided words of comfort, encouragement, and wisdom through his invocations offered at City Council meetings for eighteen years, and whereas Reverend Sheldon Steve Stevenson has always strived to remind us to appreciate the beauty of Morganton, and the genuine commitment of the citizens and leaders of the city to make our community the best it can be. Now therefore be it resolved that we congratulate and commend Reverend Sheldon Stevenson for his exemplary service as Chaplain for the City of Morganton. We benefit from the wisdom, kindness, and the wonderfully original prayer offered by Reverend Stevenson. We deeply appreciate his devotion to serving our council and our citizens for more than eighteen years in such a positive way. We thank him for his dedication and service to the City of Morganton, and wish him and his family all the best in the future. And be it further resolved in special recognition of distinguished service, and as a show of appreciation for his many years of service, the City Council wishes to acknowledge Reverend Stevenson by bestowing upon him the title of Chaplain Emeritus. Adopted this the ninth day of September 2013, Mel Cohen Mayor, Sally Sandy City Clerk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Introduction of our City Council, on my far right, Dr. Alfred Hamer, City Councilman, Forrest Fleming, City Councilman, Louie Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Mel Cohen Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Sidney Simmons, City Councilman, John Cantrell, City Councilman, Kelly Russell is Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I wanna welcome everyone here. Is Cheryl Benton here?
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Right over there.
Oh, there you are, okay.
You're not used to such a crowd.
I wanna present you with your twenty-five year pay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
When I came to the City of Morganton in 1988, I was very thankful for the opportunity that they had given me, and twenty-five years later, I'm still thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say one word about Cheryl. I just found out this was her first City Council meeting, so I think she looks pretty excited. I've had the pleasure of knowing Cheryl for eight months, a little over eight months of her twenty-five year career with the city, and I just wanna let you all know that I think that she's a true professional, she's dedicated to her job, and I think she's a great asset to the city. Thank you.
Thank you Brian, appreciate it. Thank you. Public advocacy issues and strategies, I wanna say a few words. One, we just completed our thirty-second annual Historic Morganton Festival, and I must tell you that it was a sight to be seen. We have never quite had anything like that in the community, ever in my lifetime, and I've lived here a long time. The monitor's not on.
It is.
Is it, okay. Oh, there's pictures from the festival, by the way, I'm sorry, that's both nights, I imagine. We, we had the largest crowd we've ever recorded in the City of Morganton, and I have to say that Brian Black, as I was walking through the crowd Saturday night about 8:30, said that he has finally, in all his years, he was born here like I was, seen the capacity of Morgantons downtown plus one. It was elbow to elbow, and, and we had a great time in Morganton. Both days were superb, the weather was fantastic, Mother Nature looked after us, traffic was bumper to bumper coming in on Saturday night from I-40. The positive publicity that we received from Columbia West and from Charlotte West were, that was amazing. We had some three hundred volunteers, some of them are in the audience tonight, we had thirty-five sponsors, and we could not do what we do without the volunteers, and we could not do what we do without the sponsors. Sharon's department does a great job, but the City of Morganton, I can never be any more proud of a group of individuals than the people that I represent on the roles of the City of Morganton. They're, they're professionals, they're superb, and, and I love ya, and I'm gonna tell you, y'all shined all weekend, everybody did. Again, I wanna thank you. Our wayfinding signs, believe it or not, are up, and they look very good, and I hope the people will look at them around Morganton, in the parking areas, as well as the Community House, the History Museum, the Library, the Auditorium, and the City Limit Signs. So we're very proud of those, if, hopefully you'll look, they went up, most of them today. A passing of one of our longtime council members up in Glen Alpin, Russ Gaylord was a longtime councilman up there, and also, he was a great educator in the school system, and he will be sorely missed. He was, he was a gentleman, he really was. By the way, Millie Wallace, I wanna thank you for bringing Sheldon all the months that you've been bringing him, thank you for all your efforts, appreciate it greatly. Anyone else? Oh, very important, two days from today, September 11th, 2001, was a day that go down in history, of course, as you know, we lost a lot of good Americans, and a lot of good people that worked, that, from other countries, in this, in this country. We lost people in Pennsylvania, but that day is a day that I know we can all reflect on where we were, and it was a sad day for our country and our world. Please keep them in your thoughts and your prayers, on September 11th, 2001, all the victims, and, and we basically all were victims of what happened that day. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, getting back to the festival, I was up here Friday night, Saturday morning, pretty early, like a lot of other folks were, during the day, and again Saturday night, with thousands of people that were here. The positive comments that I heard about our little town made me proud to be part of this city.
Thank you Sid.
Yeah, I'd like to say to Sharon Jablonsky and all her staff, and in particular to the hundreds of volunteers that, that helped with the festival, I just wanna personally say thank you, you did a wonderful job, and it does not go unnoticed. Thank you much.
Thank you guys. Let me move on with the Proclamations. I've got the Constitution Week I'm gonna read, and I'm gonna ask Robin Plowler and Nancy McMurray to come to, y'all are on this side, come to the podium over there. Whereas September 17th, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mel Cohen Mayor of the City of Morganton, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week in Morganton, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Morganton on this the ninth day of September in the year of our Lord, 2013, of the Independence of the United States of America, the 237th, and the 12th of the original thirteen colonies, and the 224th. This, Mel Cohen Mayor, Sally Sandy City Clerk, I make this in form of a motion.
Director.
Aye.
But vote.
All in favor, say aye. The Marine Corps League Proclamation, I'm gonna be taking to the, their day, October 5th, 2013, but I wanna make a motion that we pass their proclamation, all in favor, say ayes. And also, I'd like for the resolution we're gonna take to the League Convention in Hickory this year, for Ellis Hankins, who is the Executive Director, and is retiring at the end of the year, I make that in form of a motion.
Sir.
All right, now, I have a, one, oh, all in favor, say aye. I have a resolution. Spud, you and the chief, if y'all will come to that podium, I'm gonna read a resolution. A young man that I watched grow up, and he grew up really big. Resolution requesting the North Carolina Department of Transportation to dedicate the Enola Road Interstate 40 Bridge in the City of Morganton in the memory of Kelly Michael Kincaid. Whereas Kelly Michael Kincaid served the state of North Carolina, Burke County, and the City of Morganton for more than nineteen years, as a Lieutenant and Shift Commander with the Burke County Sheriff's Office, a Reserve Police Officer with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Police Department at Broughton Hospital, and a Reserve Firefighter with the Morganton Department of Public Safety. And whereas on March 16th, 2006, Kelly Michael Kincaid as a firefighter for the Morganton Department of Public Safety, responded to the scene of a residential structural fire and collapsed on that scene while performing fire suppression duties, and on March 19th, 2006, passed away as a result thereof. And whereas Kelly Michael Kincaid performed his law enforcement and firefighting duties with courage, honor, and dignity, and gave his life in the due and lawful execution of those duties. And whereas, a bridge currently under construction on Enola Road in the City of Morganton, North Carolina, lay in such close proximity to both Burke County Sheriff's Office and the grounds of Broughton Hospital, and is yet unnamed. And whereas Chapter 23 of the North Carolina Blue Knights, Morganton Burke Lodge 23 of the Internal Order of Police, the Morganton Department of Public Safety, the Burke County Sheriff's Office, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Police Department at Broughton Hospital do herein severely and individually respectfully request the bridge on Enola Road in the City of Morganton currently under construction be named in the memory of Kelly Michael Kincaid, in the honor of his professional dedication and personal sacrifice. And therefore, be it now resolved by the City Council of the City of Morganton, that this council does hereby request the North Carolina Board of Transportation to name the bridge on Enola Road crossing I-40, as yet under construction, in memory of Kelly Michael Kincaid, and furthermore, that this resolution be approved upon its adoption, signed on this the ninth day of September 2013, Mel Cohen Mayor, Sally Sandy City Clerk. Form of a motion.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Spud, if you wanna say anything, you're welcome.
Well, yeah, Kelly was a friend to all of us, and I don't know of a better way to honor his memory and to carry it on than by this, and I wanna thank the City Council for passing this resolution, supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation, or a few moments, with Scott Hildebrand, Assistant City Manager. Scott, gonna talk to us about how the state budget affects the City of Morganton.
Thank you Mayor, Council, I'll be brief, because I know you have a lengthy agenda tonight, but this past session of General Assembly, there were two laws that were adopted that will have an impact on the City of Morganton and our budget, but also our residents. The first was a tax reform bill that was adopted, I guess before the budget, which have a dramatic impact on our civilians, but also our city. Affected July 1st, 2014, this reform will go back and eliminate the state and local franchise tax on electricity and natural gas. It replaces that with a new combined seven cent percent sales tax, which will go back and again go in effect July 1st. The new formula the state put out will go back and hold us revenue neutral, we think, with that. Right now, we receive about $950,000 a year in electricity franchise tax, and $140,000 a year in natural gas tax, so it is good that they're holding us harmless with that. Also affected January 1st this year, citizens need to realize that the state and local sales tax will now apply to maintenance contracts, when you get your automobile serviced, also any warranties for that, also if you go to a movie theater, or live entertainment, or missions to museums. So now, there'll be a sales tax on that as well. Also affected July 1st, 2014, they eliminated the back-to-school sales tax holiday, also the Energy Star sales tax holiday, they eliminated some tax exemptions for baked goods, newspaper sales, and some other items. All in all, we think, at the end of the day, the preliminary estimates, that will go back and be $17,000 ahead with that reform. The reform also capped the state gas tax at 37.5 cent, for, I guess it lasts for two years, to June 30, 2015. Although that freeze is there, the impact of that to us will be a reduction in power bill revenue, due to the fact that people are driving more fuel-efficient cars and the state of the economy. So, we don't know the dollar amount of that, but it will be somewhat anomalous loss of that. Also, the reform required several studies to be made by the General Assembly between the session ending and then beginning session 2014. One of those is studying privilege license, and as you're aware, during the budget discussions we had, that the city receives about $210,000 in privilege license. So if the state decides to take that away in the future, that will have an impact on our budget. The second legislative act that the General Assembly adopted was the state budget. All in all, we came out pretty well with that this year. One thing that they did extend was the hold harmless money. They extended it for one year, at fifty percent of the previous payment. So that's $47,000 we should receive this year, actually next week, that we didn't budget for, which is good news. The budget also had some impact in a lot of other ways. As we all know, they closed the Western Youth Institution. They did go back and grant some money to go back and study the reuse of that building, what could be done, if anything, with that. They also funded a study for a new school of science and math at the Morganton campus of the School for the Deaf. That's underway right now, we're having a meeting this week on that. That study's due back to the General Assembly by February 1st of 2014, and we'll see where that leads. Also, they provided some funds for nineteen additional beds at Broughton. Also, they funded the new Broughton Hospital for equipment, furniture, and information technology, which is to the tune of eleven to sixteen million over the next two years. Eleven million the first year, and about sixteen five the second year. Also, they had a special appropriation of $18,000 that will go to Burke County, which will end up, I think, with Burke Development, to go back and then move forward with their mission, to go back and hopefully retain jobs, create jobs. Also, the state will be reorganizing, reorganizing the Department of Commerce, allowing some private partnerships. As we all know, they eliminated the North Carolina Rural Center, created a new North Carolina Rural Economic Development Division in Department of Commerce, and also an Infrastructure Authority. They consolidated several divisions within Water Resources to create a new division of water infrastructure. We get a lot of funding for that, for a variety of projects. They also consolidated North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund, and the Natural Heritage Trust Fund, we've got money from them in the past, and also made some changes to the North Carolina Park and Recreation Trust Fund, which has funded several of our parks in the, in the city. That's some of the highlights, there's about eighty pages, if you wanna go into the meat of this, and I know you got a long agenda.
Thank you Scott, appreciate it very much. Any questions, Scott?
If not, you can get me, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, announcement that the application period for nonprofit grants for the CDBG program is currently open, the deadline for the applications are October 14th. Power Agency, Sally.
Nothing at this time.
Consent agenda Sally.
Mm-hmm. The consent agenda before you tonight includes nine individual items considered to be non-controversial, would ask that the council consider those in one motion, unless there is an item that someone would like removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, I'll go through what those items are. We have two sets of minutes, a regular meeting held on August the 5th, and a special joint meeting held with the Burke County Board of Commissioners, also on August 5th. We have tax releases in the amount of $2,235.88. The annual approval of a cooperative bid agreement with Electricities of North Carolina. Appointment of the tax collector for the period of September 1st, 2013, through August 31st, 2014. Adoption of an order directing the tax collector to collect taxes, those two are required by state law. Schedule of events at Catawba Meadows Park for the remainder of this calendar year. Consideration of a water and sewer line extension for a Habitat for Humanity development, Hunting Creek Landing, and that includes with it a budget amendment. That project is being funded by Habitat, and bids were let for that, awarding that bid to Max Presswood Water and Sewer Inc. out of Lenore, the low bidder for that project. Consideration of a professional services agreement that we have with the COG, this is an annual agreement, they provide part of the professional assistance that the entities in this area need for public outreach and education on Phase II stormwater rules. The amount of that contract is $4,941. And finally, a budget amendment, which is for work at the painting and the renovation work that's been going on at the old historic courthouse, that was a $64,000 project, and that is to be shared 50/50 by the city and the county, and this will set up the accounting for us to receive the county's portion of that project.
Anyone wishing to?
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, motion, we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, appearances, Kelly.
Mr. Chapman.
No, state your, Mr. Chapman, state your name and where you reside, and you have a three-minute limit.
I'm Nathan Chapman, I reside at 200 Magdogi Drive, Morganton, North Carolina. I just have a comment about the, the fiscal budget, Morganton's, and we're comparable in size, maybe a thousand people, population difference between Morganton and Lenore, and Morganton's fiscal budget for 2013, 14 was $70.3 million, which includes $40 million for a city electric apartment and a compass cable. This is comparing it to Lenore's fiscal budget, 2013, 2014, which is less than $23 million, with no city electric apartment, and no city-owned cable TV company. It comes in at about $22,946,000, and Morganton's, the difference between Morganton's and Lenore's budget is $47.4 million savings in Lenore versus Morganton. And in light of some of these issues, I would like to say that if elected to the City Council, since I am a candidate for City Council in Morganton, I would like to, any compensation that I would receive if I was elected to be donated to a local worthy charity here in Morganton, since I have a job and do not need money that the city pays to the elected officials to live on, there are many groups and wonderful organizations here in Morganton that will, that welcome any donation that would help, I'm sure that would help all their causes. Thank you for your time and your support.
Larry Thurston, I live at 3911 Brandy Street out in the county. I was here last time. I got some concerns here, I wanna bring the attention of the mayor and the City Council here. As I mentioned last time, you folks hadn't had a pledge allegiance to the American flag for, on a regular basis, for thirty-two years. You had already admitted it, admitted that, Mayor. What I can't understand here is, I'm gonna bring this up, two contradictions here. You folks just got through with the county commissioners, passing this monument deal out here on the Old Courtyard Square, and I want to emphasize, I applaud, I compliment anybody, it's for the charters of freedom, but that's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to bring out contradictions. There's a total contradiction here between the fact that you folks passed the charters of freedom to be erected up there on the Old Courtyard Square, but yet you don't, hadn't been having a regular pledge allegiance to the American flag. Secondly, I understand that majority of you guys up there on the City Council have served in the military. Now, I know a lot of veterans out there, you might You might see a once-in-a-blue-moon-type individual out there that served in the military that hadn't been doing this, Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag, on a regular basis. But most of the guys I serve with today, they're veterans, and they serve, and they serve that flag still. They are loyal to that flag. That flag is not an image to sit down and kneel down and worship. It's not a graven image. That flag stands for justice, freedom, and the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. Everything that made America great. I don't like to see contradictions here, gentlemen. And you guys come out like y'all know everything up here, you've got the answers. And you know what? I never forget one time, this old Baptist preacher, talking about this elitist-minded expert. He said, "There's an expert for this, there's an expert for that." He said, "You know what an expert is? It's a little squirt away from home." That's what some of you people remind me of up here. You think you know everything, but you don't. When it comes to that American Flag, that's no brainer there, gentlemen. And Mayor, when you had that joint commission meeting, when you had that joint meeting with the county commissioners up here on August 5th, before y'all voted on this erection of the monument, I heard you refer to the city council as your men. After Vance Patterson had asked for a vote on this. Now, those city councilmen up there, elected officials, they're not your men. They're not supposed to be. And I heard that, and there's a lot of other witnesses that heard it too. Thank you.
Ben, there's a chair up here in front.
My name's Dr. Aziz Omer, 101 Irvingdale Lane. My number's 828-403-0549. I'd like to speak about the citizens' freedoms and the attempts made by your local government to impede those freedoms. Both the federal and North Carolina constitutions establish and guarantee that the people have the right to those freedoms. In this country, and in our states and cities, many people fought and died for the opportunity to have these rights, Mayor. The very first right named in the Constitution of the United States is this one. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press. Or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government in a peaceable manner, and to redress of grievances. The North Carolina Constitution uses this language in Article 1, Section 12. And to apply to General Assembly of redress of grievances, the permanent rules of 2013 North Carolina House of Representatives, established that the first order of business shall be the receiving of petitions. The streets of Morganton belong to the people of Morganton and the public in general, with the protection of the laws that I mentioned. Citizens may peaceably assemble. This includes all public areas, including the mayor's festivals. I say "the mayor's festivals" because, as many of you know, but some of you may not know, the so-called Morganton Historic Festivals are actually the events held by a private 501(c)(4) tax-free corporation in which the mayor serves as the principal. That's right. The city of Morganton does not own these festivals in any way. The mayor and the group of his associates formed a private corporation that holds all of Morganton's festivals, including one held this past weekend, as well as all of the Friday night festivals, even the farmer's market. The city of Morganton does not profit from these festivals, but actually pays the mayor tax-free corporations through various departmental donations and sponsorships to have these festivals. The mayor only uses the city grounds to hold his parties, but he also uses many, many city workers to work for him. I also do not understand how he provides electricity for all of the out-of-town vendors that come there, because I noticed at the festival that there are no meters where the electricity is being hooked into. And I was also offered the free electricity by Sharon Jablonsky, including the booth, Mayor. I guess that was approved through you. And that was free of charge. I thank you for that, but I decline graciously, because I feel that everybody else must pay for their electricity. And you talk about how it's the deposits, not really the deposits, Mayor. You've raised many other things well beyond that, including property tax, utility deposit, utility rates, the list goes on. It's ironic that we're in the process of having a monument erected on the city grounds that covers all of our rights as citizens, but at the same time, we are being told that we cannot exercise these rights. Isn't it ironic that the city council meetings are started every month by a prayer, by the preacher, but in the streets of Morganton, religious people are being denied their rights to express their religious beliefs? It's truly appalling. You know, Sharon Jablonsky told me that she's going to have to tell the people they have to take the cross down, and they are not allowed to speak at the festival, and neither am I. Just as disturbing was another atrocity, is that they were forced to take it down, or they were going to be arrested. Forced to take down thy cross.
Your time is up.
Well, I'd like to finish what I said.
You had more than three minutes, actually. I forgot to start it.
Jerry Norville, you're next.
Jerry.
My name's Jerry Norville. I live at 229 Riverside Drive. You guys have been beat up pretty bad lately, so my comments are going to be short and sweet. I am a commercial real estate developer. My company was the preferred developer for CBS drugstores for the state of North Carolina. And we have done approximately 50 drugstores throughout North Carolina, in different cities and towns. It always amazed me, when I'd go into these cities, to see the storefronts that were empty, and the vacant buildings that were all over, all over North Carolina, especially in small towns. And when I would say that I'm from Morganton, the first thing they would say is, "How you guys have such a great downtown? And what do you, you know, how can you do this?" And so, you know, we're admired by just about every city in the state for what our downtown looks like. And Mr. Mayor, I will tell you that you're a shining star in the state of North Carolina for what you've done in downtown and city.
Sure, appreciate it.
Mr. Belton.
Ben.
My name's Ben Belton. I live at 201 Riverside Drive. I'll tell you a little story. And I've served in the military. And I'm from a little town here in North Carolina, Mount Airy. I've lived all over the country. Came here, excuse me, I came here, I get a little emotional when I, what I'm going to tell you about the love of this town and the people that I've met. Well, came here 36 years ago this month. And been in the Army, I lived in Raleigh, Durham, I've lived in Alaska, I've lived in a lot of different places. And when I came, I rented a little house right here on Lenore Street. And I must have lived in 10 places that I rented here in this town over the years. So, and I came here, and I opened a business, and I opened a business here because I saw that there was a tremendous amount of vision. And there have been other mayors, and there have been other councilmen, but what I want to say this evening is, I've seen so much progress. I've seen people that come to this community, this, as I said, this is my 36th year here. I came here, I drove a U-Haul truck into this town, and I unloaded my wares on the corner that uptown. And I've worked six and seven days a week, as hard as I could work. And if I've been successful, my daddy always told me, he said, "Ben, you can be a success if you love what you do." So anyway, I came here this evening to tell you how much I love this town, and I praise every one of you here. And you're not going to do everything to, in everybody's way of thinking, it's going to be the, you know, the right thing. But as my, I just had to come tonight and voice my opinion. I have people come in our store every week, people that are moving to this community, people that are moving from all over this country. And it's just as Jerry said this evening, he said, you know, it is absolutely amazing how people perceive this community. It's the best. When you go around, you look around at other places, we've got one of the best communities you could ever possibly come to. And that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm Tom Starnes, attorney. I've been in Morganton for 51 years, and I've loved every minute of it. And I'm totally disgusted with citizens such as we have heard from the other side tonight, who have nothing to do but criticize. The so-called Dr. Omer has gotten my attention tonight. I don't think he went to law school. He needs to, because he doesn't understand the law that he espouses before this council. Morganton has been one of the more progressive, small cities in the entire state of North Carolina. And I have been so proud, and I am so proud, to be a part of it. We've taken giant strides in controversial areas for years and years and years. Hark back 50 years ago, we were one of the few cities in the entire South that peacefully integrated our schools. We were one of the few small cities and counties in the South that agreeably consolidated five school systems. The city of Morganton has, on the old hospital site, erected a fantastic auditorium, showplays, comma. The city of Morganton, contrary to most cities that I know anything about anywhere, has its own electrical service system, has its own cable television system service. The city of Morganton provides recreational facilities that larger cities have to envy, because they are absolutely marvelous. Morganton is a great city, despite what some naysayers may say, and we've heard the same thing for so long now, and it just becomes nauseating, really. And I really want to commend you, Mayor Mel Cohen, and all of you gentlemen on the council, and Sally Sandy, for your civility in the face of really nasty, down and dirty criticism. You've been, you've gone beyond, absolutely beyond the pale, and you're a courtesy to these people, and I appreciate it. I'm proud of you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom.
Can you tell me your address, please? Your mail, your address?
108 Queenside Drive.
Thank you.
My name is Cecilia Saret, and I reside at 306 White Street, here in Morganton. I would like to commend our mayor, Mel Cohen, along with city councilman Forrest Fleming, Sidney Simmons, Alfred Hamer, John Contrail, and city manager Sandy Sally for the outstanding job. The outstanding job that you're doing and continues to do for the city of Morganton. I realize how difficult it can be at times trying to balance every request, every concern, every complaint, while doing the best for the city of Morganton as a whole. An article ran in the News-Herald on July 7th urging a recall of our mayor by Aziz Omar. Although time will not permit me to cover each accusation, I completely disagree with Mr. Omar's point of view, and would like to address certain points of his argument. And I'm going to refer to the News-Herald, the Morganton News-Herald, that was dated for July 7, 2013, page 3A, and I quote, "I am asking, or I am speaking for the greater good of the community. The community says that they would not vote for this man. It's why we've had a loss in voter turnout because of the exhaustion, and they feel defeated and have no hope." The second thing I want to point out is the second part of the article. It talks about the historical Morganton Festival, where Mr. Omar says, and I quote, this is the same page, dated the same time, July 7, 2013, page 3A. "How is it possible the town of Morganton is sponsoring that festival of his, where we are using taxpayers' expenses to fund the police, waste management, and planning, and anything else that is going on that I am still unaware of, where tax dollars is being utilized to do that?" These are just a few, or these are just two examples of how Mr. Omar's argument is faulty and not based in facts. Before taking Mr. Omar's comments as truth, I urge the citizens of Morganton to verify his statements. The evidence is available to every citizen as a matter of public record. Public record will also reveal that Mr. Omar has not voted in a city election in more than 10 years. In a case like this, my mother would say, and I wish she was here to hear me repeat what she says, "If you've never voted, you don't have a dog in this fight."
Your time is up, Ms. Saret.
Thank you, Ms. Saret. I think there's a young lady right here wants to speak.
I'm just here, my name, first of all...
State your name, I'm sorry.
You need to state your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Tate, first of all, and I live at 129C Stevens Drive in Morganton. And I'm here because, in reference to what Cecilia was speaking about, a petition, this petition, recently, a couple was at my door with a petition to be signed, and in haste. And I regret to say to you, Mayor, that I signed that petition. And I want to apologize to you that I did that. I think you do a fine job. And right now, I'm in the process of having my name removed from that petition.
Thank you, Ms. Tate.
I'm Larry Whiston, and I reside at 610 Valdez Avenue in Morganton. I am a lifelong resident of Morganton. I'm retired from the Morganton Department of Public Safety with 30-year service. I served on the city council for 16 years. It's because of my commitment to and the love of this city that I stand before you tonight. For the past five months, I have watched and listened to a small group of citizens criticize the community. Yes, our region has been economically challenged, but debt does not make this city a miserable place. Governing a city requires decision and choices. Not all decisions... Not all decisions are liked by all citizens, but that does not change the fact that they must be made. I want to point out a few positives that folks should consider. Citizens enjoy a full-service city government, public safety, recreation, public works, compass, electric, water, sewer, comma, and administrative. Citizens enjoy a beautiful community that doesn't happen by accident. Citizens benefit from a vibrant downtown that serves as the heart of this community. Citizens enjoy a recreational facility second to none, including a heavily utilized greenway trail, two pews, Cotaba Meadows Park, and more. Citizens are protected by a professional public safety department. Citizens enjoy backyard garbage collection, derricks, and brush removal on a weekly basis. Local industries have expanded, hired distant employees, and renovated vacant buildings. One of the largest retail developments in the southeast in recent years is opening in October. More than heights will keep shoppers in Burke County. The state of North Carolina is currently investing over two hundred million dollars here. Under leadership from city leaders, the community fought for and saved the North Carolina School for the deaf and is now being considered for Western North Carolina School of Science and Math. Does this sound like a miserable place? I think not. As for being like Hickory-Linore or any other place for that matter, no thanks. Sure, they're fine communities, but I'm a Morgantonian, and I'm proud of it. I thank the city leaders for their dedication, positive perseverance to make Morganton a fine place to live, work, and play. In my forty-six years of involvement with this city, working with many different councils and sixteen years directly as a council member, I have never worked with any member who had any hidden agenda. Every person has had this city's best interest in their hearts. The only disagreement was how do we get there? Citizens of Morganton, this present council is sensible, responsible, accessible, and accountable. Do not let the naysayers with hidden agendas take control of this city government. I am proud to have served with each of you on this council and our city manager. My family's roots run deep in this fertile Burke County soil, and I'm equally proud to say when my nephew Jason retires from the Department of Public Safety that my family will have served this city for over one hundred continuous years.
Your time is up, Mr. Whistler.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Close. Your appearances, okay, go ahead. State your name and where yours at.
My name is Kent Banks. I live at twenty-two sixty Crestview Street in Morganton, North Carolina. And, uh, I too am very proud of Morganton. I have been here since nineteen seventy-two off and on. My family's roots also run deep here in Morganton, North Carolina. I'm proud of all the things that these other citizens, these fine citizens, have come up and listed as the accomplishments of Morganton. And I have no personal animus against anyone that's sitting up here that's been elected to this city government. My only concern is that this city has, uh, a lot more diversity that is represented than is represented here. And I understand that you guys are elected by a vote, but there is a little bit of truth to, uh, not everybody agreeing to exactly the way things are done, not everybody being included in the way that every things are done, are done. And it's troubling when I hear people stand up and talk about how wonderful this city is, but if someone has a difference of opinion than the majority of people or the people that are in power, then they're called naysayers, and they're called troublemakers, and they're called, uh, you know, complainers and whiners. This is a democracy, and the last time I looked in a democracy, people have a right to voice their opinion. That does not mean that they're whiners, complainers, or troublemakers. And as elected officials, I might not have voted for any of you guys, but you're still my city council. And that means the concerns of my community and people that I know do not all agree with all of those fine shining things that these other people have come up here and said, we don't get a voice. In going around trying to get that petition signed that I hear people trying to take their names off of and all of that other kind of stuff, I've had people ask me what would be the repercussions of them signing it if we were not successful. And I didn't put that thought in their head. You know, that's a reason right there to have a recall vote, if you ask me, if people are afraid to sign a piece of paper. I didn't make them afraid. I'm not saying that you did. I'm just telling you what I'm getting from some of the people that I'm asking to sign a petition. I have children, and I'd like for them to grow up in a, in a democracy where their voice is included. Even if their vote does not count towards electing the people that are, that are sitting on that council right there, I'd like for them to grow up in a city where white kids, black kids, Hispanic children, and Asian children can see some representation up there from their side of the, of the board. Just because you guys have been doing what you've been doing for as long as you've been doing it does not mean that there can't be some change that is positive. And it's really reprehensible in a democracy when somebody voices their opinion and they are personally attacked like Dr. Omar has been attacked.
Your time is up.
My name's Leslie Davenport, and I reside at 505 Alexander Avenue. I too am, I support Dr. Omar and his, uh, and what's going on with that petition. And, uh, I personally don't have anything against anybody up on this board. I just want to say that, you know, I just feel like that the people, some citizens are not being represented well. And, uh, I just feel like people do have a voice, just like Mr. Banks said. I also want to comment on what Mr. Starnes said, uh, about the integration of the schools. Uh, I feel very strongly about that because my grandmother, Annie J. Hicks, and my Aunt Willet Chambers, they were on this part of the six that helped integrate the schools here, especially with Mountain View Elementary School. And so, uh, I just feel like that, uh, as a citizen of Morganton, that, you know, I, everyone has a right to speak, and everyone has a right to say whether or not, you know, their vote counts. And I don't know if the petition's going to be successful, but I will state this, that we are gonna, the people who do sign it, we are gonna vote in the next coming elections and let you know that, uh, your jobs might be on the line. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Consideration of rescinding Resolution thirteen dash nineteen and reconsideration of a resolution to apply for a North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program grant. Sally.
Yes, last month you adopted a resolution allowing us to apply for a highway safety grant that we had talked about at budget time. And that grant has two components to it, a component that deals with people and a component that deals with equipment. They have asked that we rescind that part and that we adopt a new, um, resolution that allows us to apply for both pieces of that grant. So the grant is in a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, will fund two, uh, fully equipped public safety vehicles to be used by a two-person traffic patrol unit, and also pay for seventy-five percent of the salary related to those two positions. So the grant, once again, is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, requires a local match of thirty-one thousand, nine ninety-eight that is included in your budget for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen.
Okay, councilman.
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing public safety to make application for the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Can we also make a motion to rescind? Does that include rescinding the other one?
Yeah.
Is that, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, uh, next item is consideration of an addendum to interlocal agreement for the consolidation of the nine-one-one services. Sally.
Yes, you'll recall that in December of two thousand and eleven, Morganton-Burke County and Valdez entered, entered into an agreement that deals with the new consolidated nine-one-one center and those services for Burke County. Um, at that time, that agreement called for a later agreement that would deal with the transition of employees that worked in Valdez and Morganton and Burke County to the new facility. And this is the addendum to that agreement, and it deals with the transition of those employees and how they're going to transfer over and what type of benefits they would be receiving with that transfer.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to interlocal agreement for the const- consolidation of the nine-eleven, uh, service and the creation of a joint agency pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, uh, one-six-zero-eight dash four-six-two, provide emergency public safety communication services within Burke County.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to comment on this. I've reviewed this reasonably thoroughly, and I noticed that, uh, on one portion of it, uh, with the, uh, transfer of benefits, that for those employees, uh, who will be, uh, trained and have the, uh, appropriate training, that will be transferred into the new nine-one-one facility, I've noticed that, uh, the longevity benefits that, uh, these employees, uh, currently have, uh, will not be able to transfer their longevity benefits. And I, I just, I just personally feel that, uh, that's a bit unfair. No fault of the employee, uh, and I'm talking about the, uh, employees that are currently working as dispatchers for the city of Morganton, those that are working as dispatchers for, uh, the town of Valdez, who, uh, would be eligible to transfer to the new nine-one-one facility and to continue their employment, would not be able, uh, to transfer their longevity benefits. I understand that the county will not accept their longevity, and when they transfer, they'll be losing their longevity, uh, benefits. Uh, I'd further like to comment that, uh, with the, I can understand with a voluntary, uh, transfer, uh, person leaving their job and, uh, seeking new employment, uh, with a, another municipality, then they wouldn't be able to transfer the benefits. But these folks are actually losing their jobs due to the opening of the nine-one-one facility, and to tell you, it, it's going to be a benefit lost to them. And I feel like that we need to table this and, uh, contact the, uh, the county and ask them if they would be willing to accept their longevity benefits. Uh, like, uh, an instance would be if a employee currently works for the city has, say, four years of longevity benefits, then when they lose their job, if they're qualified to work at the nine-one-one facility, then they're going to lose that four years of longevity benefits. I think it's unfair to the employee, and, uh, I feel like that, uh, the county should do the right thing and accept their longevity. Uh, and with that comment, uh, I'm going to make a motion that we table this matter and, and contact the county and ask them if they would be willing to reconsider and, and accept those employees' longevity benefits.
What is, uh, you've talked to the county.
I have spoken with the county, um, and we've learned today from Valdez's attorney that, that Valdez is, is okay with this. It was the county's intention to offer employment to the people that are being considered for the move. Uh, they're willing, they are ready to make some offers of employment during the month of October because they need to get on, on that to start training and to start doing that. Um, I, I think you should know that if you table it, then you will delay them being able to make that offer of employment. Um, that is what the county manager told me, was the schedule for that. Um, I can tell you that currently, uh, Morganton has six employees that would be in positions here that are going to no longer work for the city of Morganton because we'll no longer have dispatchers. And one of those employees has earned longevity benefits with the city. The, the other five have not. Uh, the difference in, in the benefit is the city doesn't give a longevity benefit until you've been here five years, and the county doesn't give a benefit until you've been there ten years. However, their schedule of benefits for that are greater at the county. You just have to serve longer to get it. That's the difference in, in the two sets of benefits. Um, the Valdez employee actually has thirty years of service and is the one that has the most years of service.
So one, one employee is most-
And they only have one.
And, but I think another thing that has to be considered, the employees that are leaving the city of Morganton to go to Burke County will be receiving some other benefits that may, and I can't, uh, quote any numbers, Forrest, but they get some better benefits at Burke County than they do presently in Morganton. Is that correct, Sally?
Yes, their, their vacation accrual is, is greater in larger numbers of hours that you earn as a benefit kick in sooner than, than working here. They have an additional holiday each year at Burke County than city of Morganton employees. Um, I'm trying to think of what else is on the list. Those are the three big ones. And everyone's years of service, what this agreement addresses, one of the things is that everyone's years of service that, you know, you accumulate in order to try to earn post-employment benefits at retirement, whether that's health insurance, and that's the large one, um, the time that you have served at your previous entity would be counted toward time served, toward that benefit.
So how many employees are we actually talking about here? Less than ten employees? A lot less than ten employees.
Well, employees who currently today have longevity benefits, we're talking about one in Valdez, one in Morganton.
But we don't know how many who have earned, well, we know that they all have earned longevity, some that they're-
No, they don't earn any benefits. None of them have met the requirement to get longevity benefits yet.
Well, what I'm saying is, though, if the employees that are working now for the city, if they've been here two years, three years, four years-
They have not earned longevity benefits yet. You have to work at the city for five years.
I know that, but they should be able to transfer the service that they do have.
Toward longevity benefit. I understand what you're saying.
So if it got, it, say, the one's got the five years, that means they're going to lose their, their longevity and are, and going to have to start all over again.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, that's just, I don't see that being fair. With, with no more employees, I think the county should do the right thing and accept their longevity, what they've earned, and then let them go from there until they get to ten years, and then they'd be eligible for longevity, to receive their pay in longevity. It's the right thing to do. I think the county needs to do it.
What has Brian said? Brian doesn't agree?
Well, I mean, this is the agreement that they have passed. I mean, I, I guess each entity is, is considering the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know how to speak for them other than that.
It hasn't formally been adopted by any of the three governors. We're the first, we're the first one to consider.
I think what Forrest is trying to say is everybody's going to start back on ground zero again.
That's right.
Exactly right.
For longevity purposes, for no other benefits that the agreement addresses.
If you got five years, you got five years, six years, seven years, anything under ten years, you're going to lose it and start at nothing.
For longevity benefits.
For longevity benefits.
That is correct.
It's not, it's not fair.
Well, they- Well, maybe one of the things we could do is we can reduce this whole thing to dollars and cents. What are they losing? And here again, there's a big if. If they stay the required amount. One thing, all of these folks that you're speaking of, Forrest, have to stay. They may have been there three years, but they may leave at the end of the fourth. That also has to be considered. But when the benefits of longevity kick in, and you know how to convert that to dollars and cents, and then you take what they're gaining in the way of additional vacation and other additional benefits at the county, it's a balancing act. And if we go through that financial juggling, or not juggling, but balancing, and then come up with a number, and if it is very unfair to any of these employees, I think it might be in order to have a special meeting to reconsider what we're asked to do tonight. Or, does that make sense?
It makes sense, but still, yet, you know, it's going to depend on what the county wishes to do about it.
Well, and...
You know.
If we go through that mathematical exercise and we see that it breaks even with the additional vacation and the other additional benefits, and it's a break-even situation, why create an issue if it's a break-even? If it's not a break-even and it is truly unfair, and we don't know that until we run the numbers, then we come back and say, hey, let's change the deal and let's do what's right, but without knowing all those numbers, let's, the county is sort of in the driver's seat. And so, let's, now, Mr. Attorney, what's the most proper way for us to do a balancing act?
Tonight? Well, first of all, you've got to have on your agenda, and you have a motion to table. Now, I caution you, I think what, just procedurally...
Substantive motion.
That's a substantive motion, but I, there are some rules about motions to table. You might, if I might suggest to Mr. Fleming, rather than tabling, I think the appropriate motion, if that's what you want, is to postpone consideration to the next scheduled meeting. That way, you're...
Would that be possible, Sally, that we could do that and still get in another timeframe?
I mean, we can do that certainly, and then let the county know tomorrow what happened, and then see how that fits in with their schedule before we determine if we need a special meeting or not. I think that's the appropriate answer for that.
And their meeting is next Tuesday, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. I'd be willing to withdraw my motion and make the motion...
There's a motion on the floor first. We have to act on that.
He withdrew. He's withdrawn.
I'm withdrawing my table motion and want to make the motion to postpone it, postpone this action.
Postpone consideration, okay?
Until the next, until the October stated meeting?
Or either a special meeting before.
Or till a special meeting.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Consideration of a policy for whistleblower protection, Sally.
This is a policy that is required in order for us to be eligible for the highway safety grant that you just authorized us to apply for. And this is required, this is based on the form of the policy that's suggested by the North Carolina City and County Managers Association. It also meets up with North Carolina General Statute 12684, which is the state employee whistleblowers statute. And basically, what it does in a nutshell is it provides that employees don't suffer retaliation in their employment within the city in this case if they were to report in good faith what they consider to be unlawful activities.
Make a motion to approve and adopt new section 3.13 in Personnel Policy Protection for Whistleblowers.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of removing the twenty dollars per month non-cable service fee from the city of Morganton's schedule of fees and charges effective October 1, 2013, Sally.
You'll recall back when we instituted phone service and started with our triple play. Things were very different then. And one of the things that we made a decision about was to try to encourage folks to take the triple play option and to take all three services. In order to do that, there was a non-cable service fee of the twenty dollars per month. If you took phone, internet, and no cable, you paid this fee. We have a hundred and four customers who are currently paying that. We are recommending that a smarter business decision in today's environment is to eliminate that twenty dollars and to do that with the next billing. Folks get their TV all different kinds of ways now. You can get your TV on your computer through a variety of sites. You can watch movies, television shows, and everything through the internet, and we feel that it is appropriate to do away with that at this time.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Got to stay competitive.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this, too. This may be a historic moment here for the council in City of Morganton that we would consider removing a fee.
They don't have any choice.
I commend us all for doing this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration to approve and purchase of the new CMTS Cable Modem Termination System for Compass in the amount of $600,000 in reimbursement resolution, Sally.
This is the biggie. And you'll remember back in February at your workshop, we talked about the upgrade for the head end and some of the things that need to happen in the system and some changes that we need to make in order to respond to the fact that everybody now needs more bandwidth, that everybody needs more speed, and they need all kinds of communication because everybody's got a computer and a smartphone and a video game and an Xbox and everything else that they all want to use all at the same time. And so that's what this is really about. This is about taking our fiber nodes, which currently serve about 250 homes, and those are then connected in groups. And I am talking about things that I don't know exactly what I'm talking about. I'm okay saying that. And basically, changing that and connecting those nodes directly to the internet, allowing more bandwidth capacity, so everyone's speeds can be greater, so they can do all the things that they want to do. In order to do that, we need to invest in a updated cable modem termination system. How's that for a term? A CMTS. And what we have been working on since February is planning how to go about that and how to make that happen. Back when we talked to you in February, we were talking about $350,000 or so. We'll tell you that as we have investigated and gotten into this and look at what we believe to be the answer, it is $600,000. We believe that this will be able to totally change how we offer internet, the speeds at which we are able to offer that. We are recommending that we do this project in conjunction with CCI Systems. They are the Cisco vendor for the National Cable Television Cooperative, of which we are a member. We have several folks here tonight from there. They are in town. What we are able to do is to get a larger discount than we would be able to get on our own by going through the Cable Co-op, which is also the same way that we buy a lot of our cable programming. And we are able to partner with these guys and have them work with us ultimately to install, configure, and make all this equipment work the way that it needs to once it is there. In light of all of that, the staff is asking that you consider, number one, approving the purchase of the new CMTS system from CCI Systems in the amount of $600,000, that you approve a budget amendment in the amount of $600,000 and allow us to installment purchase that, which means that we would get the bids from the banks. We are already in the process of getting that, and financing rates are still very favorable. And finance that for a period of four and a half years. The life of the equipment is ten plus. And then, the third thing we would ask you to consider, because we may have to exchange dollars for this project to get going before the financing is complete, and standard process for that is a reimbursement resolution that allows us to reimburse ourselves once the bank closes the transaction. The bank would have already approved the transaction, it just wouldn't be closed yet. We've done that several times. So those are the three things we are asking you to consider. We'll tell you that once the contract is approved, work is expected to commence within 30 business days, and we're looking at a completion by the end of this calendar year.
Good.
Right?
I move to approve the purchase of the new CMTS for the CCI System in the amount of $600,000.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Yes. We looked at six hun, or we looked at $350,000 back in February. There was a payback as part of that.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's got to be a payback on the 600. Let's go into that just a little bit. Are we going to have more time to pay back? Are we going to be able to raise some fees, have addition, is this going to provide additional services, Bill, that will bring in additional revenue?
Yes, it certainly will. We'll be able, the fastest speed we offer residential right now would be 10 megabits per second downstream. With this new system, we'll be able to do 10 times that. We'll be able to offer 100 meg down, 20 meg up, which opens a whole new game for us. It puts us years ahead of the competition. And I expect we will, my goal is to do darn near double our business in the next three years as far as internet sales go. Payback on this, we're doing close to a million dollars a year in revenue off of internet now. And typically, if you can get your money back within 36 months, that's acceptable. That's pretty much the standard. We'll be able to get it back here in less than a year, you know, in six months, as far as the revenue coming in to pay for this goes. So I think it's something that opens the floodgates for us as far as future revenues go. As Sally mentioned earlier, a lot of people now get their video services right off the internet. And in order to do that, they need a lot faster speeds than what we're offering now. So I expect we will, you'll only see our internet sales grow exponentially over the next few years. And people will be paying a little more for these higher speeds, but we'll still be very competitive against all the competition out there. I don't see why Compass can't be the number one provider of internet services in Morganton by far. So I think the service that we'll be able to offer will far exceed what anything else anybody else will have here, and our prices will be better as well. So I see this as a fairly quick payback.
The second thing happening, as you all will recall from budget time and from committee time, Compass is making a payment in this fiscal year back to the general fund and the electric fund for the dollars that were borrowed in 2003, when, right, 2003, that long ago now, yeah, when we did that upgrade. And so that debt is being retired, and so basically, this debt is going to replace that debt. And so, really, from a cash flow standpoint, it should be about the same. We'll also mention to you all, I don't know if you saw this or not, September 3, Asheville Citizen Times, big article, Charter Ditches Analog Cable. This is something, you know, we've been talking about for a while, and we'll be revisiting, going all digital, getting rid of those analog channels and signals that take up all the room, and making better use of the bandwidth that they have and offering more HD and not offering a choice to take analog TV.
Bill, is our commercial and industrial customers, you still moving forward on that?
Oh, yes. We've activated our epon network, Ethernet Passive Optical Network, which we have installed at Morganton Heights. And we also have the RFog network, that's RF over glass. There's two different networks going into there from two different directions, being fed into Morganton from two different directions. So it's totally redundant. We can offer virtually any kind of speeds they want right now as a metro ethernet service. They want 100 meg right now as a metro e-service, we can do it. We can do it over epon. So yes, we're already there as far as commercial services go. And we've started at Morganton Heights, and we are, we have our fiber network throughout the city where we can begin to offer it to other businesses around the square and other areas in town.
Well, speaking from experience, when Bridgeway Solutions moved down here to East Union Street and all of our phone service now goes out over Compass Cable, it's much better than what we had.
It is. I mean, you saw our jittery and things like that are like zero. It's just, it's about the cleanest connection you can have.
And we tried to blame them for some problems that we had in our system.
And we proved you it wasn't us.
And the rascal proved that we were wrong.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second.
I made this motion because I favor this. This is a lot of money, and I'm pretty tight when it comes to spending money. But this represents a significant upgrade in this system, which is needed right now. We do not want to get in the same situation that we've gotten in the past year or so with our wastewater treatment system, where we have to come back at one time and spend millions and millions of dollars to get it upgraded. So I think we need to, we need to do this because it's a gradual, a good upstep in the system, and it needs to be done now to keep us competitive, and that's important.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
In just layman's terms, it's a good business decision, Forrest, right?
It's a good business decision.
It is, absolutely.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I move to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $600,000 for the purchase of the new CMTS with installment purchase financing.
Second. Now, second. Any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing City Morganton to reimburse itself on the proceeds of the tax-dent financing for certain expenditures made in connection with the purchase of the new cable modem termination system for Compass Cable.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is consideration of a bid award to replace storm-damaged substation equipment, Sally.
Summer storms, and we have had several, took some damage at two of our city substations. We need to replace two breakers and three substation voltage regulators. We have taken bids for those items and recommend award to the lowest bidders. Snyder Electric for the breakers, that's $34,400. Siemens Energy for the voltage regulators, and that's $44,085. As told to you before, we have filed this on our insurance and expect to get some of that back when that claim gets processed.
Make a motion to award the purchase of equipment to lowest bidders. Snyder Electric in the amount of 34,4 for two substation breakers, and Siemens Energy for the amount of $44,085 for three substation voltage regulators.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion?
I think the public needs to know that, if I'm not mistaken, we've got, we're operating because we've got borrowed equipment. Is that not correct?
Yes.
That's correct, Councilman. We borrowed a breaker from Gastonia, and so far, they said they don't need it back yet.
[laughing]
Yes, we did. I thank the city of Gastonia for their cooperation.
Yeah, we need you.
That is one good thing about electric cities, there is a lot of cooperative work that goes on between the cities, whether it's in a storm event, whether it's otherwise. You approved an agreement on consent agenda tonight where we do some cooperative purchasing, which allows us all to get a better deal. There are benefits to being a part of that group.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Brooks.
I love my powers.
I guess one of the things that I think we have to point out, that even though these are two big amounts, and they'll be reduced by an insurance claim, it's still within our budget for the repairs and maintenance that we would normally do, correct?
So far. We'll see what happens between now and June, if that holds. We'll see what happens between now and June, if that holds true.
Well, that's what budget...
Scott Lookadoo says we're going to have a bad winter, and I'm pretending like he didn't say it.
He doesn't always predict, right?
He's still a woolly worm guy.
Yeah, that's right. Did I make the motion, guys?
Yes.
Yes. I have a second. Second, Alfred. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 108 East Meeting Street, Sally.
Yes. Dr. Gresham Orison has requested on behalf of Wisteria Restaurant that we approve a sidewalk encroachment in front of the property that he owns located at 108 East Meeting Street. The restaurant is trying to create some, a small area of outdoor seating, and in order to do that and be able to offer the full service of the restaurant, they need to separate that from the public sidewalk. So you have in your information a plan where you see the ironwork that would be attached to the building and would distinguish that from the sidewalk and allow the outdoor seating. In order to do that, we need an encroachment agreement. We've done several of these in the past. The staff has determined that there is adequate room there for public passage on the sidewalk and for this structure, as is proposed and planned. The encroachment agreement also sets up the terms and conditions in the future. If either the city or DOT decide that that has to get removed for a reason, this agreement sets that up.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 317 North Green Street, Sally.
Yes, this is requested by Table Rock Contractors, and they are working on the property located at 317 North Green Street. They are constructing or developing that property to turn it into a microbrewery. There's been a lot of work going on there, and that quiet little entrance to town is seeing quite a bit of action right now. In order to do that, handicap accessibility was required for that building, for that type of business, by the State Building Code. There's work that's gone on for some sidewalk improvements, and in order to do this, there's a sidewalk encroachment. Staff has determined yet again that there is still room to get around on the public part of that sidewalk and do this. Just like before, this agreement sets the terms and conditions in the future, should DOT or the city need that removed, how that would happen.
Some move.
I make a motion to approve a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 317 North Green Street with Table Rock Contractors.
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
Yeah. I understood the drawing for Wisteria. Lee, can you make this drawing just a little clearer for me, what we're trying to accomplish there?
The handicap ramp extends right off the point of the building and back to up North Green Street.
Okay.
So it's a short segment. It's only about 50, 50 feet long from one edge to the other edge, just long enough to get the handicap access. Unfortunately, Morganton's not built on level ground, so trying to retrofit 1930 structures into 2013 codes is always a challenge, and without some extra width on the sidewalk, we wouldn't be able to do that. So it's working out that we have extra width there.
And basically, what this is doing is providing a handicap ramp on a narrow sidewalk.
Right. In order to convert the building into the new use, they have to have two exits and two fully accessible handicap exits, one on the back side of the building, one on the front side of the building. So this was the best solution that we could come up with, with their architect and our building specgers.
And in their plan, there's no sidewalk seating proposed?
There is some seating proposed, but they have not come back to us with a plan to actually utilize it yet, but they have discussed it, so they may be coming back to you in the future for addition.
But not within this encroachment?
It's only with the handicap accessibility.
Not this encroachment agreement does not deal with that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. Motion second. Discussion, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a non-contiguous annexation petition submitted by Murray Corporation...
Mahershia?
Yeah. For 1.7 acres located at 1150 North Green Street, Sally.
This is a petition to voluntarily satellite annex this property. It's about 1.7 acres, plus or minus a little, is directly adjacent to North Carolina 181, about 575 feet from the existing corporate limits. Small commercial center. It's currently developed as that today. There's a convenience store, several small shops that are located in there, and it's called Freedom Plaza. They currently have access to city water and sewer service that already exist. City staff has reviewed this request, does not anticipate, you know, that it would be difficult or create any adverse operational impacts if you approve the satellite annexation. The current tax value of the property is a little over half a million dollars, so it's, you know, fairly substantial property. If you wish to pursue this, state law requires that you do three things. The first thing would be that you must adopt a resolution directing the clerk to certify the annexation petition. Then the clerk will do that, if able to do so. Then the third thing is you would adopt a resolution that would set a public hearing that the public would be invited to speak at and express their opinion on this annexation.
Okay.
Would recommend if you do that, you set that for October 7, the regular scheduled meeting in October.
Motion to adopt a resolution directing the clerk to certify sufficiency of the annexation petition received from him and corporation.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on that?
Where is this in reference to that New Dollar General store? Is it right?
Dollar General's here. You go down a little further, and it's right over here. It's on the opposite side, just a little further north.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to adopt a resolution...
I can't... First thing I got to do is certify to the sufficiency of the petition, and I can do that.
Okay.
So you're good.
Okay.
I move to adopt a resolution fixing October 7, 2013, at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers as a public hearing date to consider the annexation petition.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, consideration to amend a CDBG Small Business Loan Agreement with Teresa Elaine Kinney and Titus Benjamin Kinney, member owners of Kinney Subs LLC, doing business as Motown Deli Grill and Catering, Sally.
You'll recall back in June that you did a small business loan to Motown Deli, which has opened up in this building, right outside the courtyard, in Morganton Trading Company. And you did that through the CDBG Small Business Loan Program that has been so successful. At that time, the business was really approved for a loan of $30,000. They only took $20,000, because they're trying to keep their borrowing down to a minimum. As they did their move, as normally could happen when you move a business, unplanned replacement of some equipment, some additional startup costs that they had, some delays in timing, getting moved, those kinds of things. The owners have now requested an amendment for an additional $10,000. We'll tell you that the city currently holds collateral and personal guarantees in excess of the $30,000, which is going to be the total that you would have loaned if you approved the $10,000 agreement.
Okay. I'll make the motion to amend the CDBG loan agreement with Teresa Elaine Kinney and Titus Benjamin Kinney, member owners of Kinney Subs LLC, DBA Motown Deli Grill and Catering.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to appoint Kim Woolard of Winbine Terrace to that position.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And last item is I'd like to, on a mayoral appointment, two new members to the Human Relations Commission for a one-year period, two high school kids of the same family. Hannah Stansel, a sophomore at Freedom High School, and Travis Stansel, a senior at Patton High School. Like to make that in form of a motion to join the Human Relations Commission and to let them know tomorrow.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything further from any of the council members?